Call this meeting to order of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners, Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. It's 8:30. Roll call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Over here.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the pledge allegiance, stay standing for the invocation.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
You may be seated if you'd like. We, good to see you again today. I want to just say it is for freedom that Christ set us free. We are used to this time of year, as we're looking to the coming of our Lord Jesus, we've heard so many sermons throughout all the years about how everybody misunderstood what the Messiah was coming for. Those who were looking for the Messiah, they thought that he was going to come just to lead them in a revolt against Rome and lead them in a military victory. And they all, we all keep preaching, saying, no, they got it completely wrong. But there is a reason that that's what those looking for the Messiah thought he was going to do. And that's because the Old Testament prophecies were full of the promise of God coming to lead them out of oppression. When our Lord Jesus came back to Nazareth now as a grown-up to preach his first sermon at his hometown church in Nazareth, this is what he said. He announced his ministry this way. "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and recovery of sight to the blind, to sit at liberty those who are oppressed." Listen to those words. He came to heal the brokenhearted, proclaim liberty to the captives, and sit at liberty those who are oppressed. Yes, whereas often we think that that means he will deliver us out of our circumstances, most of the time, and sometimes he needs to, but most of the time, he's going to give us freedom first in our circumstances. So I just want to say that if the Son sets you free, you will be free indeed. Let's pray. Father, I want to thank you again for this awesome country where we get to come and live in a land of freedom, and we get to keep lifting that as a banner. Father, I want to thank you for these that come and they give their service, they give their time to help us as a people work together to accomplish our business. Some here, we have paid staff that does a great job for us, and some here are volunteer that they serve you in such a great capacity. I'm asking for your anointing upon them. I'm asking for your blessings upon them, and I ask that you will bless this meeting this morning, that you will lead Franklin County into the past that you have for us, into the blessings you want us to live in. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Public comment, Janet?
No.
Okay. Okay, our consent agenda this morning, consider tax change orders and a minus $970.12. The commission meeting, minutes for November 30th, special payroll for December 1st of $218.12, and a grant of easement to Michael R. Moody, trustee of Jack R. and Karen D. Moody Trust. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
Phil Kenny will do some planning and zoning.
This first request before us today is a request to rezone five acres from the A1 District to the RE District. Let me just make sure I'm looking at the right one real quick. So this request was brought by Kathleen Anderson. The property is currently located at 3297 Indiana Road. The Planning Commission did hold their public hearing on this request, and the Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of the rezoning for that five-acre tract from the A1 to the RE District. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of getting on this one?
And I think this one is basically, there is an existing farmstead on the property that I think their parents used to own, and now that they've passed away and obtained ownership of it, they don't really have a need for the house, but they do want to keep the ag land. So that's the main reason why they're requesting rezone to split off.
Okay, a positive motion. Do I make the motion to approve rezoning application 2209-2000, Anderson, to rezone approximately five acres from an A1 agriculture district to a RE residential estate district, and amend the official county zoning map accordingly? Show move.
Okay.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
Okay. The second item is rezoning application 2210-2004 for Thompson, his request to rezone approximately 34 acres from the A2 Transitional Agricultural District. And I guess the original request was actually to rezon to the I-1 Light Industrial District. The individual's desire was to build some mini storage units on the property. The Light Industrial District would be the district where it's actually permitted by right there. What staff ended up recommending, and the Planning Commission also recommended, was approval of a zoning of lesser change to the C2 Highway Commercial District in that district. Mini storage can still be approved, it just goes through the special use permit process. This property is located at the interchange with Marshall Drive and I-35, and then with Nebraska Road to the east. And so our future land use map of the comprehensive plan does actually anticipate this area to be more commercial, sort of on this property. I would note on the west side of the highway, it does actually say industrial over there. So in my mind, it wasn't really a, out of character for a consideration to the I-1 District. I don't think that that was wrong to, you know, apply or to look at, and could have been considered appropriate. But my recommendation was that I felt like the C2 District was definitely more appropriate. I think also taking into consideration that as you move farther east, you do get into a lot more residential houses in that area. So the C2 District, and then if he goes through the special use permit process, does allow us to look at that and see if there's anything that we need to do to sort of help that transition between a more commercial area to the residential area. So if we needed to do screening or something like that, we could do that. I was sort of expecting them to be here today, because I know from my discussions yesterday with them, they were, I know, planning on still requesting that you guys consider the possibility of still approving it as I-1, because they would rather not have to go through the special use permit process. So I know that that's where I've had some discussions with them on. I did recommend, and the Planning Commission did also, their recommendation included the requirement that a engineered traffic study and stormwater study be required as part of the development. As I've had some additional conversations with Mr. Lee, as long as their entrance is located on Nebraska and meets our normal separation requirements, Mr. Lee feels pretty comfortable that storage units are not going to be a high-volume type use. And I think the characteristics of that road being pretty flat, that there's not really any site characteristics that causes problems. And so I think we would be comfortable removing the requirement for the engineered traffic study as long as they do the entrance on Nebraska Road and meet our normal separation requirements. I would still suggest doing the stormwater study, so.
The stormwater studies, basically to make sure that this project doesn't net any additional water.
Yes.
Kind of surging down the, and there are flooding issues in that area.
Yes, yeah.
All the houses already.
Yeah, make sure that it's being discharged in a manner that's not going to cause a problem for a neighbor. And I would say also, from a long-range perspective, you know, something else will probably most likely happen with this property in the future. And this will sort of give us a baseline for where we're at. And then as they add more structures on it, those can sort of be added on to that drainage study to make sure that we're not impacting neighbors, so.
The thought against an industrial zoning is while the mini storages aren't objectionable use, it would allow other uses that that are likely.
Yes, yeah. So if we went with the I-1 Industrial District, warehousing, some trucking operations would be permitted. And I would say with the uses that are occurring on the west side of I-35, okay, I could, I could see those going there, because that's already sort of what's going on there. Over here, to me, it's a little bit different. You know, there are a lot of-
Joined by houses on several sites and residential use.
Yeah. And so, again, the comp plan also sort of foresees this area being more commercial. And I think in a few people I've talked to, I don't believe we had anybody that really spoke out against it. I think we did have one, one individual that expressed his support, especially with the C2 rezoning and the special use permit. So I think people felt comfortable. You know, there are some other items that that special use permit would allow us to do, you know, if they're going to do some like outside storage, you know, again, we could require some screening, or just as we look at how they're orienting their buildings to, you know, make sure that there's maybe a building outside of where the outside storage is occurring, just so that it screens itself, basically. So those are some of the things that could be looked at, so.
So, question on the special use permit.
Sure.
How long is that good for?
So what has been recommended by the Planning Commission, and that that would be for a 10-year period, and then it, basically at the end of the 10 years, they could come in and apply to sort of update that, and then the-
What happens if somebody decides that they can't, they've got a million dollars sitting out there in a mini storage, and you're going to tell them that they got to tear them down?
I would say from, from most of the cases that I have seen, when we have a use that's been operating in compliance with the special use permit requirements, and there's not some substantial change to the area, I have not seen any not get approved for that reason. But it could.
I mean, what, if, if, I understand that you want to go from I-1 to C2, and I understand why you're doing that.
Yes.
Why can't you just put a special use permit and just put it unlimited on that?
And it, and it could. If you guys felt strongly-
For the life of the use.
Yeah, that it could be just as permitted right. You know, the other part of this is, you know, if they were violating any conditions of the special use permit, then they, well, and I guess what I would say is, those will, I guess, be discussed as we're going through the special use process. This one's just the rezoning. So if they were violating something, if we had screening requirements, and all of their screening died and they didn't replace it, well, then at that point, we could bring them back and go through a process to revoke it. So we still have-
There are tools that work in the right direction there, too.
Yes, yeah. So, so, yeah, we could approve it to be good forever. The, probably the one thing that I would note on that is our regulations. So if, for some reason, they ever stopped using it for mini storage for more than one year, then the special use permit does automatically expire. My guess is, with the number of storage units, and well, the lack of the number of storage units, I don't really see that probably ever being an issue that it's-
Well, the investment alone, you got to do something with.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that running it with a time period doesn't seem fair to them, and it doesn't seem workable, realistic to me.
Okay.
Are there storage units across the road, or did I just check?
Um, I think there are a few storage units. There's, I think, right at the interchange, there's one property that's sort of separate that I think has a, just a couple buildings on it. And then I think behind it is a property that has some, a couple of storage unit buildings on it.
This is a very large property. I mean, you could put a lot of, would we limit how much they do, or would you just let them?
No, so through the special use permit process, that's something that we could consider, to where, you know-
Site plan would be a part of that, wouldn't it?
Yes, yeah, we could say that it needs to be in here. My understanding of what their desire is, is that they would probably start building them in the southwest corner, so basically along I-35. This property, there are some unique issues with this property. There are a number of gas lines that cross it that make it probably more difficult for any kind of development to occur as well. The access to real water is really limited. You know, on the west side of the interstate, there, there is no water access, really. I mean, you'd have to extend a water line from the city, you know, over there. And I believe that that rural water district, or at least in this area, doesn't really have the capacity to add additional meters. So any kind of larger project that would need water is going to have issues here.
Sounds like mini storage is perfect for there.
Yes, yeah, as I say, limited infrastructure requirements, you know, once they're built, traffic shouldn't be too bad, and to be-
Doesn't make a lot of noise, doesn't stink.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a house on there right now?
So the individual that is selling the property to Mr. Thompson owns the property to the south, which I think is where the communication tower is located. I do believe that there's a house there, but on this parcel, I don't believe that there is. And sort of as we discussed a little bit earlier with the I-1 District, sort of the same thing with the C2 District, you know, if we do approve this rezoning, any of the uses that are permitted in the C2 District could be approved. And then so even though the applicant has sort of stated his intent to do mini storage, you know, it could always come back as being a different use than, than that. And, you know, if it was a permitted use, there's nothing that we could really do about it, so.
If the stormwater runoff state comes back and say, hey, you guys need a retention pond, I guess.
Yes.
Would be the solution.
Yeah, and that would just sort of show up in like a grading plan for the development of the property. And so we would just make sure that, that that was taken into consideration, and, and also, you know, how they're doing that discharge, you know, so that they're not discharging in a location that's going to maybe cause an erosion on a neighbor's property, or-
So is this a new deal? We're getting ready to start on every project as far as commercials?
I think on, commercial ones, especially where we're maybe larger projects, I think we're, we're trying to, I'm, I'm trying to look at it, you know, if we have an 80-acre parcel and somebody's building a really tiny structure in the middle of it, okay, we're probably fine. This one, to me, they're, they are, I think, trying to put it as close to the property line as they can. It, between the, the buildings that would be placed and, and the, the parking areas, in my mind, are likely to generate a little bit more runoff. And so it, you know, I'm, I'm definitely looking at it from the commercial perspective.
Okay. Any more questions for Danny? Okay, a positive motion be, I make a motion to approve a zoning of lesser change for rezoning application 2210-2004, Thompson, to rezone approximately 34 acres from an A2 Transitional Agricultural District to a C2 Highway Commercial District, with the condition of that engineering traffic and stormwater studies be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit and amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
And I just want to make sure if we're removing the engineered traffic study from that, if that-
Remove the traffic study and also give them an unlimited amount.
Well, that'll be handled when we-
It is the special use.
When we do the special use permit, yeah.
You get that, Janet, there's notes. Okay.
I'm making motion to approve with the traffic study removed.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
The final one that we have is a request for a special use permit for a sign that's
larger than what would normally be permitted. For some history on this property, this property is located just to the south of Wellsville. Formerly, there was a special use permit that allowed for the operation of sort of a dairy creamery and retail sales as part of the agricultural use of this property, under some of our former zoning regulations. When this brought, was brought to me, that operation had ceased for a number of years, and so technically had, the special use permit had expired, that had been previously issued. But our regulations have changed a little bit in regards to how we deal with some of these types of accessory uses to agricultural. Our regulations do now specify that retail sale of items that are produced on the property is part of the agricultural use and would just be permitted, and does not require a special use permit any longer. So when I first talked to him, I thought we were going to have to update the special use permit sort of more for the whole site, as part of starting up the retail sales and some of those things again. But determined that I don't, I don't believe that that's required under our current code. But what he is requesting in the A1 District, we have a maximum size of sign that's permitted in that district at 12 square foot. He would like to be able to place a sign out on I-35 to be able to advertise his operation that's occurring there. And is requesting to be able to put a 50-square-foot sign up. And I would say what was approved by the Planning Commission is that he could do that in three different configurations, either just one 50-square-foot sign that just faces the highway, a double-faced sign to where it's more perpendicular to the highway, so you could read it from both sides, or that he could also do like a V-shaped sign to where he'd have 50 square foot, 50 square foot, so that it's a little bit easier to read again. And so the, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of that. And in my opinion, the zoning regulations do allow for a special use permit and allow for you to consider larger signs than what are typically permitted in the agriculture district. And I think this does sort of bring a unique characteristic of this site, requiring them to only have a 12-square-foot sign adjacent to the highway. Nobody could read it. If anything, it would probably almost be more dangerous if people were trying to read it on the interstate. So I think allowing for the increase in the situation makes complete sense, and will help his operation. It will be limited, that it can only be an onsite business sign. If, if this was to change to a sort of off-site advertising sign, that's treated differently. And then the state of Kansas has additional standards that he'd have to meet as well. But because the sign's located on the, on the property where the business is occurring, no state permits are required for that sign, so.
So they did check with the state rules and the federal rules on signage?
That is from, from conversations that I've had with the state, is what I've been told. If the sign is advertising the business that's onsite, then the, the state doesn't typically require anything. The, the state statutes that deal with that address billboard signage for off-site advertising. And then they have specific requirements. And if this was an off-site advertising sign for billboard, the state wouldn't even permit it because it's owned agriculture. The property would have to be zoned commercial or industrial for them to even consider an off-site advertising sign along an interstate highway. And that's, that's main, the main thing where the state regulates the signage is along the state highways, so.
Other question? Okay, positive response be, I make a motion to approve special use permit application 2210-2005, George, for the placement of a 50-square-foot business sign in an A1 Agriculture zoning district based on the findings and subject to the three conditions cited in the attached resolution.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson. Chair Dunn.
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, Sheriff.
Good morning. Before you, this morning is the law enforcement contract between the Franklin County and the city of Pomona. This is an annual thing that we do. Just as a, kind of a rundown of what, what this does is that the sheriff's office, by contract, will provide 40 hours of dedicated patrol service to the city of Pomona, in addition to responding to calls for service there, outside of the, of that regular, of those particularly assigned 40 hours. We do provide the city a monthly report, an activity report, let them know what it is that we do, what is going on there. The contract says that we also have to meet with them periodically to discuss what's going on there. I do that a couple times during the year, and then we attend their, their meetings as well to address any concerns that are there. This contract, the, what changes typically every year is the dollar amount, and this year, that is, it's no different, in that the, this contract for 2023, the amount will be $72,255. That is an increase of $5,433 over the current year, which is about a 7.5% increase. And this, this dollar amount has arrived at salary and benefits. It does not cover any of the equipment cost, or fuel, or anything like that. So that, what they're paying for there is, is a, the salary and benefits for one person for that time. And it is not a particular person. We take an average of the personnel who could do this. So it could be anywhere from a deputy to a patrol sergeant, and then an average is put in there, and that's how we, we arrive at that dollar amount. So that's the way that it has been done since before I got here. It seems to be working. If, if there periodically has been talk about changing that to put in equipment and things like that, but that hasn't, so, so far has not been anything that we've, we've done. This particular contract was presented Monday night at the Pomona City Council meeting, and it was approved by the city council. So I will answer any questions you guys have on it.
It seemed like, like you said, this has been forever time, like that far back as I can remember. And I don't remember any issues. The only thing is negotiating increases. I don't, I don't, don't remember any issues of one, one way or the other. So it must be pretty well entrenched in, in, and how it works.
There was, I think it was a couple years ago, we talked about their finance situation at, at the city, and we discussed, well, what would that be if we lowered the, I think it was the amount of dedicated patrol hours that we would do. And so there was some negotiation there, but they arrived at, they wanted to stay with, with this number of hours.
Do you fluctuate the onsite times?
We do. We vary, we vary the, the, the time of day that those are done, so that it doesn't, we don't want the, the criminal element to figure out a routine and then figure when they can do what they, what they want to do. So, yes. And I should also mention that the main reason for having this is that we cannot, by statute, enforce any city ordinances unless we do have a contract with them. And they also need to have a roster, just like the county has a roster of all of our personnel who can enforce laws. The city has that. Anytime we have personnel changes, I update that. The city has that anytime we have personnel changes, I update that and then provide that to the city clerk. Because we all have a commission card through the city of Pomona as well that allows us to lawfully enforce those ordinances.
Any questions, Jeff? Okay, a motion to be made, I may move to approve the 2023 contract for law enforcement services for the city of Pomona in the amount of $72,255.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Sheriff Dunn.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you want to give us a report while you're up here? We're going to do staff reports now.
I I can. We have started using the the transport van. We've had pretty good feedback on that. It's as far as the use of that. And I think the gas mileage seems to be a little bit better and it's a it's it's a it's a good vehicle. And and our staff is very, very happy with what we're with with that change. And then we've talked with Central Heights. They again are very, very pleased with what is going on down there with the SRO program. They're looking to somewhat even expand the duties that that he's doing down there that would be more of a traditional SRO, helping more in the classroom and things like that. So those are the things that we were that we're looking for because it's not just having law enforcement onsite for an enforcement type and security type purposes. But it is building the relationships and and more of a prevention type activity that goes on in that that classroom is going to help in that. And Vega's doing an excellent job down there and we're they're very pleased and we are we are very pleased as well. So that's all I have unless you guys have other questions for me.
Thank you, Jeff. Derek?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. Just a few quick ones. Tax sale demand letters went out in the last week. So I would expect there to be a rush on paying back taxes. And frankly, we've already seen some of that. Jody's been consistently letting us know that she's getting payments in, so it is working. I met with Dustin Browning yesterday and this is to kind of piggyback on the juvenile update. So the Juvenile Justice Oversight Committee, which is comprised of random state legislators legislators. It oversees, does just what it says, juvenile justice. And they released a statistic that of all of the juveniles that were arrested statewide, only 13% of them ended up being detained. So that shows you, I mean, 87%, I mean, and think about what it takes to to rise to the level of being arrested. And even then, only 13% of those end up in some kind of JDC. So it just kind of further bolsters the the fact that I think we made a good decision there. Wellsville ambulance station just got the contracts last night. I I think Wellsville's still shooting for approval next week. I will have them reviewed this week. If they look well, it may very well be in front of you next week. So that's moving along. And then the last one's just a reminder, we have a board of health meeting after our study session on Monday. I know Brenda and Pam have put a lot of work into getting prepared for that. So that's all I have. Thanks, Roy.
Hey, thanks. Paul, do you want to give us a little update?
Good morning. Pretty exciting news we got on Tuesday is from the Department of Commerce on their broadband development office of broadband development. We've had a couple of companies apply through that great grant program to expand some broadband services in Franklin County. And one of them was awarded just a little over 6.9 million to expand broadband in Franklin County over in the Rantoul area. And so very excited about that. I'm still waiting to hear on the other applicant if they were funded or not, it's in a different region of the county. But this was something the county supported. FCDC, a number of other organizations wrote support letters and and had some conversations with the company as we went through this process. But I think that's another great step forward for for the county and I'm excited that the state saw that. And that's a pretty nice chunk of money coming in to help our broadband. So that's really all I've got unless you have any questions, but wanted to share that good news. Christmas came early.
Had a had a good meeting, executive board meeting yesterday. Roy and I were in attendance at, good discussion. I I think that we won't get down into the weeds, but we're going to take a pretty deep look at FCDC's bylaws. As it stands now, there's there's an executive board and a full board. And I I think we're going to look at how those boards meet, if if it still needs to occur the way it does. And I would anticipate us modernizing that and 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 there being some changes. But that's something we'll look at over the first quarter of the year, probably.
Yep, yep, yep.
I know you were showing at Princeton that you are getting involved on some state level.
Home and home repair, home improvement?
Well, yeah, state level committees are.
Oh.
You can.
Yeah.
I mean, we all know that there's money out there. It's just like, how do we get our hands on it? And I think the more involved you are on the state level.
Yeah.
The more chance we're going to have of finding out how we can get our claws in some of that.
Yeah. Thanks for that, Ian. I am on the board now of the KEDA, which is Kansas Economic Development Association, which represents all of the ECODEVO across the state. And then we have subcommittees and I'm on the legislative committee. So I'll be involved with promoting economic development legislation through the KEDA. We actually have a legislative day February 2nd where I'll be in Topeka all day and we'll be meeting with legislators and discussing things that we would like to see them promote. We're actually already identified some key some key areas that we're kind of working through, but in February, we'll kind of kick that off. So, yeah, as I longer I'm in this position, the more I'm I'm connected into the different organizations and understand where I can spend time more effectively. And so that's a that's a great place for us to be as a county, is on the board of KEDA, but also in that legislative process. So looking forward to that, yeah. The other thing I thought you were going to talk about is is there is a grant program out there that we're pushing out. Where folks, individuals can apply for $10,000 in home repair and upgrades throughout the throughout the county. And so we've sent that out to all the municipalities and all my membership has seen that flyer and so kind of getting the word out on that. It's actually run through Osage County, but it's for the entire state. And just already had one applicant reach out since I met with Princeton on Monday night. So happy to get those words out, so.
Good. Any questions, Paul?
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I do anything else?
Just to let the board know, we did have another member of our board of zoning appeals resign here this last week. Nancy Ball is having some medical issues that she's going through and so she needed to resign. We did recently add another Joe Costco onto it, so that was sort of nice. But we are now two positions down on that board again. So the board usually has or should have seven people on it. I think my understanding, at least one of those positions has been open probably for more than 10 years. That I don't know that we've ever had a full board of zoning appeals. But but we're now at four out of seven positions. So we're we're still where we should be okay in regards to quorum and stuff as long as only one person misses a meeting. But I think I I've talked with the board of zoning appeals and let them know that we're down one and see if they know anybody that might be interested in in serving on that. Definitely if if you guys have anybody that you know of, that would be great, so.
Okay. Dustin, do you have anything?
No, sir.
When's the estate planning meeting, Brett? You here for the estate estate planning? Okay. Do you have anything for us?
Not now.
Okay. David?
Yesterday, we had a we heard a presentation from ADS Pipe. They came in to talk to us about their polypropylene pipe products. We had about 20, roughly 20 folks in attendance. That included folks from Lynn County, Lyon County, Coffey and Osage Counties also. I think that a lot of great information was presented. I think the consensus consensus from the group related to that plastic pipe, they dispelled a lot of, oh, maybe information that was old. The newer products alleviated a lot of the concerns that the group had. And I quite honestly, I think it would be a welcome addition to the list of approved materials for Franklin County. So in the coming weeks, I'll be putting together a a resolution to include that type of pipe. And I'll also include some background information memo to help you all determine if that's a direction you want to go. So that'll be coming sometime in the next several weeks. It may be after Christmas, but it'll be coming before you. And then the second thing, the landfill property that we agreed to acquire, gosh, six months ago. We finally have a good description, title commitment, so we are ready to close. We can do that this week if if we can get things in order. So I'll reach out to you, Commissioner Dunn, to to set that up. The total acreage, we were anticipating it being around 62 acres. Turns out it's only 58.19, which is still significant and will still benefit us. The total value of that acquisition is $290,940, which will come out of the special caps fund. And just as a reminder that all the dollars in the special caps generated by user fees, there's no ad valorem tax dollars involved in that. And so finally, we're going to be able to close on it and acquire it.
And the price we negotiated was per acre, so it, even though we ended up with less because of easements and and the.
That is correct.
The price was less.
Yes, sir.
And David, can you remind us, if I recall, we asked, I believe it was SCS.
Yes.
To modify their study based on the new acquisition. Is that correct?
Yes, and so SCS, as a part of their their contract with us, we have had them go in. They have done some geotech work already on that site to determine, you know, where the where the rock's at, if there's any water, those sorts of things. Here in the coming weeks, we're going to go do some soil samples to determine suitability of that material for cover material and those sorts of things. So that work is progressing and now that we're acquiring it, they will take the information that they are acquiring and they will analyze whether or not it's appropriate for us to. You know, as you recall, we had determined a footprint for that CND landfill expansion. By acquiring this additional property, we might be able to expand that footprint out into this property. And that is part of what some of these extra activities are, why they are occurring, is to help with that design. And so they're supposed to be out before Christmas to to do that. So shortly after the first of the year, we should have a, we should know if we're going to be able to expand the footprint, which means a longer lifespan of the CND landfill. And we'll also know if we can utilize some of that material right now for cover material across the the site as we are adding CND material to our existing site. So it it's really a win-win for us all the way around. It's not every day that we get the opportunity to acquire property like this. And it really will, you know, this landfill is going to be in this location for many, many generations to come, thanks to the work that we're doing today.
Which is a pretty dramatic change of circumstance.
Exactly.
Because I can remember sitting in your office a couple of years ago, talking about how the, you know, we can see the end of the landfill's useful life. And now, like you said, I.
Right.
Especially if we can utilize this new land to expand the footprint. I think generations is a very accurate way of putting it.
So we were looking at approximately seven years at our current rates of adding material to that. We were going to run out of airspace within seven years or so. This process and and the way that we think that it will go with the footprint that you all have already approved, will expand that that life to approximately 100 years. At our existing tonnage rates. You know, if that fluctuates one way or the other, those dates are changed. But certainly adding acres to this will lengthen that timeframe. So it I think it's really a great thing for the county in really a very long-term scenario.
Yeah, it's a good deal. Don't have to worry about neighbors now.
Not not on that side, for sure.
Janet, do you have anything for us? Mr. Stottermeyer?
Yeah, I did attend the meeting yesterday on Mr. Waymeyer. And I thought very informational. I know I mentioned that David a couple of years ago talked to him and thought maybe something, you know, but but the deal David put it put together yesterday. He could have just done it for his own people, but he didn't. He included all the counties around us and brought them in here and and the company provided a nice meal and hour and a half of very good information. And what was good, he really thought it out good. They brought in an outside engineering company that represents in our area that does a lot of work in Ottawa. They give their opinion on it, plus they give a lot of opinions of the state of Kansas has put on this material also and their use of it. So I want to thank David, you know, he could have just limited to herself and cut his work down a lot, but but he did that to provide a good service to all the surrounding community. You mentioned landfill. I see an interesting deal the other day in Lynn County, don't know if you've heard of it or not. But their staff come to them and told told commissioners, they only have a life of a year and a half left. I mean, you know. So they're in a scramble mode and we're fortunate enough that we're thinking a lot further out than than something. We got nervous when he said 10 years. I mean, you know, so thank our group for taking care of that too and putting us on the right track. I think David comes to us and tells us we got one year left and nothing done and where do we go, you know?
Permitting two years, three years?
We're looking at a two-year process.
Yeah. But anyhow, appreciate that. I did attend a Rantoul meeting last night. They got quite a few small things going on. They're upgrading one of the water wells and they're writing a new contract. They house the rural fire department and city halls in their building. They they occupy half of it, half forever, 20 years. They're just updating their contract there. And another thing they're, they had quite a conversation is their coach court. It's going really well and Judge Campbell is going to handle their cases for them. And they're going to start having them at city hall once a month. And hopefully they don't need him very much. But since they've started to implement this, things have really started to happen down there with people they don't, the city is serious about. You know, they don't want, and the first thing the city attorney says, they're they're not there to put anybody in jail or anything. They don't want to do that. They just want to get things straightened out. I think with this process, the a small community like that, Richmond, thankfully Richmond and Princeton brought them in, Rantoul probably wouldn't have done it on their own. But Richmond laid the groundwork for it and the paperwork and so all we had to do was just include their resolutions and codes to go along with the the bulk they already had. So it sounds like it's turned out to be a good deal. That's all I got.
All right, I don't have any more. Oh, yeah?
The only thing I went to the chamber copy on Friday for Enzo Self Defense and MMA and he's also a litigation lawyer, so we were trying to use him one thing that. you can defend yourself, or he can defend you if you need somebody to defend you. So anyway, the business that has been open for about 18 months, but kind of started in the middle of, of COVID, some, looked like some good people that are invested into the community. And then I did go to the Princeton City meeting on Monday, and I know a lot of this, but they are still continuing the discussion on their stormwater system that needs a desperately needed upgrade, and how are we going to pay for it, basically, and I know that Paul Bean has been really helpful in that, and I appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Paul, do you have anything?
It's all been covered.
Okay. Paul and Derek kind of covered our FCDC meeting yesterday morning, and I don't have anything else, but we have a executive session. I need a-
I need 15 minutes with the board and myself, the county administrator, county counselor, to discuss a personnel matter involving non-elected personnel.
Okay.
And I would take a motion.
Take a motion, go ahead and do that.
So move.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of the planning commission, or the executive session at 9:37. No decisions are made. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. For adjourn.
Aye.